Well, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30 PM. And at this time, I would ask that you please join me for the invocation. Father God, you are sovereign, and we're just going to continue to trust you in all things. We continue to pray blessings of peace and joy and great health and prosperity for our families and businesses throughout Henry County. And we just ask for your presence, your wisdom, your will to be done throughout this meeting this evening, so that your will will be done for your people. And all that agree in Jesus's name, please say amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our united nation of the republic, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and those who are tuning in as well on live streaming and also who are watching on Spectrum, Channel 180. At this time, we do have, we'll call the meeting to order again. We do have an announcement. The following plan and zoning item that was advertised for this meeting tonight has been postponed by the applicant, and that is RZ 20-05 with Tim Jones Property requesting a rezoning from residential, a single-family residence to residential suburban for property located north of Mount Carmel Road and east of Mill Road and District 2. So that planning and zoning item again has been postponed by the applicant. Are there any other changes or modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none. We're now open the floor for a motion to accept the agenda with that modification.
Motion made.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor accepting the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, any opposed, just to make sure. Okay, so that seems to be a unanimous vote. We'll now move into the next agenda item, which is our financial quarterly update. And I understand that Mr. Smith is here to make that presentation, our financial services director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Henry County Community.
Good evening.
Now, this presentation is going to cover the financial report and SPOLOST. It'll also serve to allay some of the rumors about our financial condition, which are much, they say that we're benign, but we're not. So I'll begin with our COVID-19 response for our community. Ms. Monas will be presenting detail later. And although the duration remains uncertain of this COVID-19 crisis, I believe it's worth noting that we've awarded 119 small business, well, we've awarded 36 small businesses and six nonprofits. 119 small businesses have applied to date and 34 nonprofits. We've kicked off our mid-year process early so that we can position ourselves for any future impacts. So let's do some numbers. Total revenue year-to-date. We've now collected 12% of our revenues. We've only expended 24% of our budget, which means we're right in line. Our revenue increases are primarily driven by coronavirus relief funds, reimbursement of 5.9 million. That amount is sitting in intergovernmental grants as you look at when we get to the financials themselves, that's where that's sitting. Collections of our property taxes are going to begin in earnest in November, December. I want to note that we are only one of three counties where our local government revenue from loss and SPOLOST have not taken a significant hit. SPOLOST collections and sales are currently averaging 200,000 per month greater than our budget. So our next slide is financial report. We're amending that right now, even though our expenditures are exceeding our revenues, we typically are spending out of our cash balance until we get the tax revenues in. If we continue to spend at this budgeted rate, that difference will continue to be paid out over this period of time. So the next slide is a graphical representation of where we are. Give everyone a chance to look at it. And this presentation will be provided to you if you don't have a copy of it. This next item is our month-over-month performance, where it shows that even though we're spending at a rate greater than what we did in prior years, it's primarily due to our COVID-19 response at this time. I have a graphical representation of this. So let's take a look at our SPOLOST collections. So this is SPOLOST 5. As you recall, in prior years, we were presenting the SPOLOST 4. This is how we're beginning our SPOLOST 5. We budgeted to be receiving 3.4 million per month. As you can see, we're averaging quite greater than that. We haven't spent a lot of money at this time, but we have a lot of requisitions in currently for our SPOLOST 5 expenditures, so those numbers will begin to increase. This is a graphical representation showing the budget and our actual expenditures. It trails off in September at big decline because we haven't received our September collections. Our collections are typically a month behind, so we haven't received September yet. There've been a lot of questions about cotton fields. And in my next financial update, I'm going to talk about the airport, but I am going to add something about the airport in this presentation. Right now, our revenues are trending higher than they did in fiscal year 20. Our fiscal year 21 revenues are actually 31,000 better than the expenses this year. So cotton fields is no, is no burden on our general fund at this point in time. I didn't bring the slide for the airport, but the airport itself is also operating at 18,000 better than expenditures year-to-date. This concludes my financial presentation. What questions do you have?
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. My only comment is that on that SPOLOST where we saw that big decline, I would rather just not show anything since we haven't collected, but you know, again, we understand that we haven't collected yet, so thank you.
So around October the 28th or October the 30th, we'll have our September numbers in.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, well, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move into our consent agenda, and so we have a couple of items. And the very first one, I do want to pause a bit because we do have some individuals that we want to recognize as part of the, that item on the magistrate court. It is a resolution approving the appointees of the judges of the magistrate court of Henry County. And as we all know, there were several judges appointed by the governor recently, and one, two of those were Associate Judge Danielle Roberts and also Associate Judge Vincent Lotti, who has now moved up to state court judges. And so tonight, again, we welcome, as I call your name, will you please stand so that you can be recognized? But Chief Magistrate Judge Martin Jones is actually, if you want to make the introduction, sir, you can just stand because we won't go through it in detail, but we want to thank you as you make the presentations. And if there are any questions from the board, we can come back to that. But we have Ms. Shalonda Williams here, Stephen Norris Knights Jr., and also Ted Norman Echols, who are being proposed for the appointments for Associate Judges of the magistrate court. So we welcome you for being here this evening. So thank you again. Okay. So that is an item on our consent agenda. Of course, if anyone would like to have further conversations, discussions, we can be removed from the consent agenda. The next consent agenda item relates to our elections and voter registration, which is a resolution accepting the Center for Tech and Civic Life grant in the amount of 487,793 dollars to provide planning and materials and equipment to make the voting process secure and safer for voters, poll workers, and election officials. The next item is under grants. We have a public safety grant under the Henry County Fire Department, and that resolution is accepting the Norfolk Southern Discretion Grant in the amount of $5,000 to purchase supplies that would support decreasing Henry County Fire Department's response times. And then there is a Henry County Police Department grant, a resolution accepting the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Local Program in the amount of $26,532 for the purchase and installation of license plate recognition systems for the Henry County Police Department. And then under SPOLOST, there is a resolution approving the bid award for engineering design services for Racetrack Road at Iris Lake Road in Districts 1 and 3. And then there's a resolution approving the bid award for design services for the whitening of Fairview Road in District 5. So at this time, are there any items that the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda for further discussions? There is one I would like to have more conversation about, and this is regarding the, the resolution accepting the grant for the elections and voter registration. Do we have someone here to discuss that? Okay, well, I'm requesting to have that one removed from the consent agenda for further presentation, especially as we talk about what's been going on with our Board of Elections to just, to serve our citizens. Okay, so that is, anything else? Anyone like to have further discussion about? Okay, so the question here is, can we approve the consent agenda with that removal of that item from the consent agenda to write immediately after the consent agenda? So the floor is now open for a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Our consent agenda is now approved. So if now we'll have someone to come and, you know, give us more details about the resolution accepting the Center for Tech and Civic Life grant and the amount of, that has been stated. We, we welcome Ms. Pitts.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, I don't know, I've, I've never done this before, but I just wanted, you already had explained the award amount. So I just want to give you in detail where it was a grant that was provided to me by one of my board members, and I went through the process of applying with the help from Kimberly Monas and Budget. And when I submitted this application, I was letting this organization know that we were going to use this for things from needing to get temporary staff, getting more equipment, as well as getting PPE items, different things to have, possibly have cleaning done for the polling locations, as well as possibly doing hazard pay. And they were grateful with awarding us the amount that was given. And the only thing that they request, there is no match, and the only thing that they're requesting is to give a descriptive list of what the money was used for by January 2021.
And so the equipment that you spoke about, is that for new machines or additional machines?
We're hoping to possibly get more actually, the BMD machines as actually the machines, the tablets that we use to vote on, as well as an ICC tabulator, which is the machine we use to scan ballots, because we only have one currently, so just, we want to make sure we have something for backup.
Okay, all right, very good. So there's no match or anything that was required? Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Ms. Pitts, I want to thank you so much for what you've done to get this grant before us and having it approved. I know you worked very hard at it, and being within your first year of being here with Henry County to take on that task, you are to be commended for it. And to see that your area needs additional supplies and equipment and to find a way to make that happen, that's commendable. I want to commend you for stepping out to do that. It's so much easier just to say, I need money, but to need money and go find it and find a way to bring it to your department, again, is so very well commended. So thank you for that. And in your process of using your dollars, I'm not sure if you can, but please look at your office equipment as well, your computers, are they up to date? How long have they been with you? What are the age of them? If you need new software to function effectively, please look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, are you also, I'm sorry, we'll let Commissioner Clemens go. Commissioner Clemens?
About hazard pay for staff, talk to me a little bit more about how you plan to do that. Who gets it? How do you determine that everybody gets it or everybody does not get it? I know that you have a lot of seasonal workers there just for elections. I really want to hear more about that.
Yes, ma'am. I was working on a resolution to present to you all about the hazard pay, but unfortunately I had a family crisis come up, and I have not been able to follow through with that as of yet, but I am still working on that. But, because I was told that I need to do it in detail, and I just have not had an opportunity, but I'm going to present it. I talked with Stephanie, who has been advising me on how to make sure I get that information and to get it back on to present to you all.
So are you saying the funds that you, that we're approving here, you will be using that to give to employees?
I'm hoping to. That's the, that was, again, I had a family crisis, came up in the middle of trying to get all that done, the resolution to ask of you all, because I was told I have to actually present that to you all, to ask for approval to do that. Am I wrong on that?
Yeah, I was kind of wanting, wanting if Commissioner Clemens had completed her thoughts. Okay. Any other questions? I know I've got a question or so. So are you also getting enough poll workers, you know, with volunteers? I know some people have been a little bit concerned about COVID, but also I noticed that this grant is to cover poll workers as well. So how does that match? Because I thought we had a budget already, and basically if we use the budget that you have for this election, what would happen with this grant? Does it go back into your budget as well to be used for anything that can be even outside of the election?
To my understanding, it has to be used for elections, and it has to be done from the time period of being awarded to it to the end of the year. That's why I have to report to them January 2021 what it has been used for. And as far as the poll workers, we are constantly in a need of poll workers, but we have a very good list of people that want to be poll workers, as well as we have a standby list that we have trained, people that say that they will be available from currently until 10:00 AM Election Day. So where if we call them and say, you know, we need you here or there, they're ready and prepared to be, to come out as far as poll working.
Okay, and so again, if the money, the full amount is not used by the end of December, then what happens with the remainder of that money?
I will have to get back with you on that. Unfortunately, I do not have the answer.
Okay. Are there, Commissioner Clemens?
I definitely would like to see a more detailed allocation of how the funds are going to be spent, only because from a judiciary responsibility and so that we don't have any violations of saying that we voted for it and not knowing how it was going to be spent. I'm just not comfortable voting not knowing how those funds are going to be spent.
Absolutely, I understood it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Barn has a second. Any further questions or comments? I will say I too would prefer a detailed itemization before I could fully support it as well, so that's why my vote is really going to be known until, you know, again, I still will be looking forward to that information. But do support, you know, again, what it will do, I just need to understand more about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we had a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? One, two, three, all opposed. So it's 3-3. So that means, again, if you bring that information back, hopefully we can have a favorable vote to move it forward.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And so Ms. Pitts, before you go, one other thing, I received a call from the Chair of the Board of Elections and also you commending our staff about the support that they've given, especially during these first day of early voting. Can you elaborate on that for the board and explain what that commendation was all about?
Yes, ma'am. We ended up having an unprecedented turnout for the first day, and we were able to talk with Sherri. They have, Sherri and her staff, as well as risk management with Don Ash, even IT, facility maintenance, all of them have come together, whether we needed water or help us come together with a call center, helping us get the locations that were going to be used for the last week. We had to quickly pull it together to go ahead and open up all locations starting that Thursday last week, where we weren't going to open them to the last week. They all pulled together from everything, from getting us equipment like phones, laptops, again, like I say, water, tents for the disabled. There were so many things that they stepped right in. Anything we needed, they were right there spot on within 24, 48 hours. So I thank all of them for being so helpful with everything that has come upon us last week and this week.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for elaborating on that. And so staff, we again commend you, county management team and EMA Director for all that you've done to help us through these times of voting elections. And Board, again, I just wanted to share that, that again, the Chair of the Board of Elections and Ms. Pitts' call to commend them, and so we thank you for that feedback as well.
Ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you again. Okay, well, we will now move into our, our next agenda item, and that relates to our Department of Transportation resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Caterpillar asphalt paver, and Mr. Burke Halter will be making that presentation today.
Chair, Board, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Johnson's currently under the weather and couldn't make it tonight, so the Henry County Department of Transportation is in need of replacing the 2001 Cedar Rapids paving machine, which is asset number 6385. The machine has reached the end of its service life, and it's no longer economically feasible to keep in the fleet. A replacement paver from Yancey Brothers here in McDonough is a used 2019 Caterpillar asphalt paver with just 92 hours, and the funds are available in the DOT Capital Equipment Fund, and in the resolution, the machine is $379,198.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion. I heard a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that seems to be unanimous. Thank you for that presentation, sir. Thank you. We'll now move into our next item under 8A regarding the Resolution 20-188 regarding the criteria for Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program, and we're inviting up Ms. Monas, Kimberly Monas, our Grants Administrator, for that presentation.
Take me just a moment here, if you don't mind. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Sorry. At the October 6th Board of Commissioners meeting, the Board requested that staff and the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Review Committee go back to Resolution 20-188 and consider amending it to reflect the Board's wishes on a number of items, as well as give it a fresh look now that the review committee has evaluated over 100 applications under its guidance. The review committee meetings on October 9th and October 16th contain discussion items related to that request, and the results have been presented to you in a tract changes format so that you and Henry County citizens can see a side-by-side comparison of the existing resolution and the proposed amended one. The amended resolution contains language that includes the specific requests by the Board of Commissioners, as well as additional review committee suggestions that would further the Board's desire to expeditiously get this money into the hands of eligible small businesses to assist in their restart and nonprofit agencies to assist eligible Henry County citizens in need. What you have before you is a resolution to amend Resolution 20-188 to approve Board of Commissioners to staff directives from the meeting on October the 6th, and to accept the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Review Committee's recommendations to make additional appropriate changes that would allow the restart and assistance programs to reach more Henry County small businesses and nonprofit agencies. I'll take any questions the Board may have.
Okay, we thank you for this presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, will you elaborate on, I guess, just to explain the revisions that we're showing here, the revised payment protection program restriction, just for those who may not be familiar, and then each of the other items as well? If you would elaborate on those.
Yes, ma'am. In the October the 6th meeting, the Board requested that we remove the Payment Protection Program Restriction, PPP. When we took this to the review committee to consider, they agreed, but suggested that we put the threshold of $150,000 in, because that is the differentiation between what is considered a small business and what would be considered a large business. So that's the language that we chose to put in the amended resolution. We were advised that the Board wanted to remove the elected officials restriction with the exception of yourselves. What we did was we removed all appointed officials of other boards for Henry County with the exception of the actual review committee that reviews the applications. So the restriction was left in place for the Board of Commissioners, and a restriction was put in specifically only for the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Committee, Review Committee. The last part, Commissioner Clemens had asked in the October 6th meeting for us to consider extending the deadline. There was actually never a deadline for applications. We have an application deadline that doesn't end until the money is expired. However, what we did do was we took an initial September 1 small business deadline for use of funds and extended that to December the 31st, and we took an initial nonprofit where it was at December 31st, and we extended it to March 31st of 2021. So there was additional time for nonprofit agencies to assist citizens in need. In terms of the additional suggestions by the review committee, a working capital for nonprofits was taken specifically because we, in the discussion items that went before the committee for each nonprofit, there was concern that they wouldn't have enough working capital to jumpstart the programs that they were doing. Some of them were going to be strictly being reimbursed for expenses that they had already incurred. Others were incurring expenses as we speak. Giving example of one of the nonprofits was expending $10,000 a day servicing Henry County citizens with food and shelter and other eligible items. And so we took the 30%, 70% kind of guidance that we used when we got Treasury Act money And so we took the 30%, 70% kind of guidance that we used when we got Treasury Act money. And we decided that the 30% upfront advance was something that would be helpful to the nonprofits to get the money out sooner to the citizens in need. And what this would do is it would provide 30% of their award to them upfront. They still have to apply for, they still have to get reimbursed for, they still have to put in all of the financial information that says this is how we spent the award. Nothing changes, they just get the money sooner. And the 70% remaining is not eligible for them to tap into until they have provided the reimbursement information for the first 30%. We additionally thought that removing the franchise restriction would also be helpful for small businesses because there are some franchises that are not getting any help from their franchisors. And that being said, many of the franchises are very small and they would fall under the same small business. So we were concerned that perhaps small businesses that saw the franchise restriction may not be applying. Revising the restrictions for individuals. One of the things that was originally in the amendment was that we put the onus on the nonprofit to make sure that the individuals coming to them were specifically individuals in need of services and that they had not received any type of services for the same thing before. And the onus on a nonprofit is very difficult. They're, they're pretty good, I mean, they're, they're not, they talk to each other for, for not one thing. And they're certainly not going to pay the same individual for the same expense twice. But some of the questions that came up in the review committee were, well, what if one person got food in July but they need rental help in October? Should they, should they be disqualified? And the answer that we came up with was no, they should not. How that is, is the nonprofit can do their due diligence to ensure that this is an eligible individual. And if this individual can prove eligibility by being, you know, in need of this service, they don't necessarily have to prove eligibility that they've never received any other service. So the nonprofit will still be doing their due diligence, but we're removing wording that puts the onus on them to ensure that a particular individual who is in need would all, would be otherwise accepted and would not be restricted in this manner. In terms of the clarifying the program name and responsibilities in the original resolution, there was many references to CARES Act Committee. We changed that name to the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Committee. So a lot of that is there. There's references to federal dollars that have been crossed out and made Henry County dollars. But mostly everything is the same and it's all in your tract changes.
Well, thank you, and thank you for elaborating on that. My only other question is, especially for those who in the first phase or round of this where if the Board approves these changes tonight, how are we going to communicate to those that may qualify that applied before? If the Board approves these, these modifications?
Yes ma'am. If the Board approves these modifications, you will all actually find a few of the businesses that will be in my next presentation have actually been previously restricted under PPP and we brought them back forth in hopes that you would approve this amendment so that we can put them through. So they are actually on your list with the understanding that if the, if the change does not go through, then the denial is still in effect. If the change does go through, then they would otherwise have been eligible for an award and the review committee has awarded them contingent upon you all accepting this amendment. But further, there have been changes made to the application process. The actual application online has been changed to reflect some of the changes. The specific ones, I can tell you. I'm sorry, it's in my next page here. We've added some things. We've improved the application itself. We've given more detailed instructions. We've put in links to helpful forms. And we've insisted on clarification of the required documents. So in the applications themselves, we removed the requirement for bank statements. It's no longer a consideration. The requirement for the 2018 taxes is only there if 2019 is not presented. And now that we've passed the October 15th deadline for tax extension, that's not going to be a concern. We, we need to see something. As I talked to you in the October the 6th meeting, we have to have some, some baseline figures to look at. So, but if they've provided us 2019 and 2020, there's no need for 2018. So in the application itself, there is asterisks next to certain documents that are required. We removed the asterisk from the 2018 requirement. So if they don't give it to us, then they don't give it to us. And that's, we're okay if we have the other information. Let me see what else is in the application. So there's a lot of clarifying language cleanup in the application process itself, specific to the things that you've asked for.
And again, I guess the other question, I still think about if the Board approves it tonight, how are we going to get the word out to individuals?
Yes ma'am.
You know, if the Board makes these changes. Because that's going to be, you know, a concern. And how's, how, if you have a flood of applications, how is it going to be allocated?
Yes ma'am. I can tell you that I have a plan in, in my unit specific for the ones who have already applied and will go through a reapplication process. Or if they don't need to go through a reapplication process because they are, you know, one document short or two documents short. There are those applicants that are going to have to go through a reapplication process because they're short eight documents and we just can't create something from nothing. But those who have previously been restricted from, you know, a specific reason that you may lift are ones that we are already in discussion with. That, that my unit, we already talked to them. We've already brought them back before the review committee for them to look at again. And so you will see some of these reapplications this evening on the next exhibit. But you will also see of the 11 that I'll put forth to the meeting for you next. So maybe more than 11. It'll be 11 so far because that's what the review committee for the next group has already approved. But there'll be a number of reapplications in that one too. But as far as getting the word out to a larger audience, that would have to be something I would have to talk to Communications about. I personally don't have a plan for that yet, but that's something that we're talking about.
And that's going to be, I guess, a big question. And then again, is it going to be on a first come, first served basis or whatever? So that's kind of what, what I have in mind.
Yes.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Commissioner Clemens?
I want to look at some of the tract changes. 14, where you have with the county's grant department and you scratched out application. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I'm sorry ma'am, I, 14?
Yep, tract 13. So I have several different items to address, Chair. So we'll start with that one.
The very first one, the 13th, whereas?
14.
14. I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Yes ma'am. Oh, where we've changed the wording. Yes ma'am, the original wording had the review committee reviewing all the reimbursements. The review committee is there to do the application process and to approve or deny, evaluate applications.
So the reason I'm asking, because we took application out of the Resolution 2018. So in the amended, application is gone and it only states reimbursement.
Did I?
So they should be reviewing the application?
Yes ma'am, that, that's correct. If you read at the top part, it says, "Whereas the county desires to establish a review committee for which each commissioner will appoint a member to review submitted applications and documentation." That part remained in the top. We removed it from the bottom so that they're not reviewing. Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
And then for, for documentation of eligible expenses, do you have a timeframe for, because in 15, where we removed the timeframe of the eligible expenses, is there a timeframe? So for instance, you guys are not just awarding money right away. You say that you're eligible, then there's a reimbursement process. Is there a timeframe for them to be able to turn in those reimbursement expenses to you?
The reimbursements themselves have to be expended by the end of the performance period. So if you are a small business, your performance period is going to end December the 31st. You have 45 days after December the 31st to make the reimbursement. That's part of the special conditions that each one of them signs. Nonprofits would be March the 31st of 2021. They also have 45 days after that.
Okay. And the reason I said that, because I know we said December 31st and March 31st, but there is not December 31st. It's 45 days from December 31st.
45 days to request the reimbursement, but the reimbursement itself must occur by December 31st.
Gotcha. Okay. And then working with our court system, the nonprofits that are receiving funds, I know that now that our judges are back in session, they're receiving eviction notices. There are people that are coming through our courts and our judges are having to make decisions. We need to make sure that we're getting information to our court system about funds that may be eligible for these businesses to keep their doors open. I know that we're sending it directly to whatever nonprofits are doing it. I don't know if there's a way that we can have some money set aside that will help those businesses that are going through that court process. But I would like to see us do something with that. And maybe that's something that you have to bring back to the board after we look at how much money is expended during the second round. But there's a lot of businesses that are going before our courts that are being evicted that are not going through this process. And so even if we have some documentation to the court saying, hey, if you have somebody, you think that they may be eligible for this, this is the information that you can give them before you make a ruling to evict them, you know? So I want to make sure that we're doing something with that.
Yes ma'am.
And then the last one is, is there something, is there a process in place when you're reviewing the applications for nonprofits that may be a federal-funded or state-funded nonprofit that we're not double dipping in the CARES Act when they're fully funded by, and you know that, you know exactly what I'm talking about?
Yes ma'am, I understand, especially the USDA programs that, that Commissioner Thomas was concerned about before. The only process is, my experience and the experience of Ms. Anio and the experience of the nonprofit committee members, we're aware of most of the federal programs that are out there and the nonprofits that are being, there's not, I'm not going to tell you that I can know for certain if they're getting other money, but the, the special conditions that they sign for us is binding. And they sign the same ones for the feds. And I would think that that in and of itself, this is something that they do all the time. When we go through and get a grant and the Chair signs it, it's a binding, you know, it's, it's the law. So for them to be able to, you know, present something for reimbursement to me that they presented somewhere else, I can't know for sure that they have, but I can understand that if they've signed special conditions with one agency and special conditions with us, I can feel pretty certain that they wouldn't try it. But in terms of, there's, there's no way for me to find out because it's a delayed system. Like if you're looking to see who's been awarded, you know, I could go through, there's so many different processes of who gets awarded. I'd have to go through DOJ and I'd have to go through DHS and I'd have to go, because there's not one-stop shop where I can see what the awards are.
So I would just ask tonight that you would add as part of their application process to ask the question, is this a reimbursable grant by any other federal agency? And that would clear it up.
It's, it's kind of that in the special conditions. It makes it very clear. You may not request any other, you may not request a duplicate item. You may not request anything that's being funded under any other state or federal program.
Okay.
That's one of the special conditions. They have to initial it and then they have to sign.
Okay. It's not funded under another state?
Yes ma'am. Those words are used in the special conditions.
Perfect, perfect.
Yes ma'am.
Hey, anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, my, my comment is, is that I'm glad we at least identified those who have not, you know, in the first leg of this or phase of this, you know, had not received much benefit. So I'm glad to hear that we are reviewing, you know, an opportunity for those with still some levels of restrictions to, to help more businesses. So I'm, I'm glad to hear. So at this time, the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendments adding that the Board, the group will bring us something back to work directly with our courts for businesses that are coming through our court system for eviction that may be eligible for funds.
May I ask a question about that?
Okay, just a moment. Let us see if there's a second and then we'll open it up for discussion. We've got a motion and there is a second. Okay, now, okay, you may.
May, is it appropriate I get with you later to get clarification on that or would you like? Okay.
I just want to put it in the minutes that you all will look into it.
Yes ma'am.
Well, we just want to make sure that the resolution that we're about to vote on is clear. So can we clarify that now? I'm looking to our county attorney to see if there's any language that we can clarify now on that recommendation from Commissioner Clemens.
Well, I think what she said was that she wanted them to look into it, which would be, I think that is sufficient. They're going to look into it and.
Well, I just want to make sure that the resolution that we're voting on is clear.
It's not written in the, it's not written in the resolution right now. We would have to, we would have to add a whereas or a provision that says that the staff will look into working with the court system.
And it doesn't have to be in the resolution. It's the same way we did before where we talked about you will bring us something back with amendments. So I'm saying again, when you come back again, bring us something to talk about how do we address businesses that are not part of this program that are going through eviction processes in our courts that may be eligible. That may be giving information to the judges or having a Zoom meeting with the judges so that they know this is out there as a tool to help those businesses in the community. So whatever, we'll talk more about it.
You're not making that a condition to this approval. You're making that an additional instruction.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further, okay, Commissioner Thomas?
The question is that she stated, this is just for you to review, but we're not doing any type of set aside for any of these people that's going through the court system, right? I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can do a set aside for people going. We're just, so my question is, she's just asking you to let the judges know that they have the ability to apply for this money, I'm assuming?
No, let's clarify. From what I understand, Commissioner Clemens' motion is to approve the, the changes that we have now. That's the first and the second. And then to bring back something to the board that may relate back to the court system and making sure that, you know, that there is some consideration or information brought back. That would be a separate resolution. Is that correct, Commissioner Clemens?
It doesn't have to be your resolution.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay. All right, so good question. Any further questions or comments? So we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That is a unanimous approval of the resolution as presented tonight. Okay? So we're now moving to the next item, which is a resolution requesting the Board's approval of the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program Committee's recommended submissions for award for small businesses, group and other reapplications.
Hello again.
Hello again.
I'm presenting another summary update of the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program's progress. For new viewers and as a reminder, in order to award funding under this program, the county established a review committee comprised of one voting member of each district and the Chair for a total of six members. Applications are vetted by the Grant Administration Unit and presented to the review committee for evaluation. Their recommendations are presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The online application posted August 19th and will continue until funds are exhausted. The BOC-appointed review committee has now met seven times, August 28th, September 4th, 11th and 25th, October 2nd, 9th and 16th. This is an all-volunteer committee who takes their charge very seriously and who strives to serve as good stewards of Henry County funds. The small business and nonprofit applications, small businesses are eligible for up to $10,000 with post-award approved reimbursement submissions. Nonprofit applicants do not have a request ceiling as long as they can prove capability and competency in administering a program of the size that they are requesting thus far. 119 small businesses and 34 nonprofit applications have been received to date. 105 small businesses and 29 nonprofit applications have been vetted by the Grant Administration Unit and evaluated in the review committee. Through their last meeting on October 16th, a total of 42 applicants have been recommended by the review committee. The Board has previously approved 16 small businesses and six nonprofits. 10 small businesses are on the agenda this evening. That'll be the next slide. And at least 11 more small businesses will follow on November the 4th. The remaining 18 applications, as well as 16 committee-directed second look applications are in various states of processing. There's actually two pages of this one. So this is the first group. And the, the county manager asked that I add an extra column for example of eligible uses of funding for the small businesses. So pursuant to what they applied for in their narrative, what they showed that they might be using their funding for, this is some of the information that they provided. So there are one, two, three, four, five. The first five that you see are new applications, beginning with Compound Sportswear and Prestige Remodeling. These are previously restricted under PPP that were revisited by the review committee in lieu of the PPP. in lieu of the PPP requirement being lifted. And thus far, since you all approved the previous resolution, we can go ahead and award them with the rest of the group if you agree. And the next one, this three was also PPP restricted. With the exception, I'm sorry, of Abicis first, it was not. It was part of the original group. They're just in there by date of application. So this is your ten. What you have before you is a resolution to accept the review committee's recommendations to award ten small businesses for funding. Staff requests the board approve the review committee's recommendations to award these Henry County small businesses with COVID-nineteen relief funding. Any questions?
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Hear a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that is a unanimous approval and thank you very much and thank you for the review team's work as well. All right, thank you ma'am. So we're now entering to the public comments section of our agenda for tonight. And this is the opportunity where citizens can sign up prior to the meeting to voice their county-related comments and they will be given five minutes each. So at this time, I'll look to the county clerk. Were there any public comments this evening?
No Chair, there were not.
There are no public comments. Okay, so that concludes our public comments section. So at this time now, we'll move into the next segment, which is the approval of our August eighteenth, twenty-twenty regular Board of Commissioners meetings. Were there any changes or revisions to those minutes? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments? All in favor? Okay, that is a unanimous approval. We'll now move into the county manager's comments.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This evening I do have a quick update that I wanted to make the board aware. I know you all are constantly trying to provide updates to your constituents regarding the status of specific projects, specifically our capital projects within our SPOSS program, transportation projects, road projects, and a host of other things that are going on at a county level. And so our staff has been working diligently to create a platform that not only you'll be able to utilize, but the residents of Henry County will be able to utilize as well. So this evening, I'm going to have Mr. Tucson Kirk come up and do a very quick demonstration of the application that we've been working through. We are in the process of finalizing the applica, or finalizing the app, which will again be available on our county website. I think I've confirmed that it also may be available on your phones, but I will reconfirm that and make sure that once we go live, we'll get that information to you all. We are expecting to go live with this application on November first, but wanted to give you all a first glimpse at what we've been working on and definitely receive any feedback or any additional information that you would like to see entail within this presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kirk.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. So what you have before you is a web-based program for Clear Glove. We've used this in the past for, the financial department has for online transparency with the budget. And this too will allow transparency in all the projects that we are doing for SPOSS and hopefully in the future for T-SPOSS. So again, it's web-based. You here, see at the top, here you talk, see projects. And the, I guess the kind of cool thing about this is you can see here, it says all folders. Once you drop it down, you can see countywide projects or projects by district. So let's click on District Two here. So you look at, let's see, where's Duck Town? There we go. Also, where the little shovel man is, we'll have the emblem until we get some pictures of the actual project site. All right, so once the, you go to the website, you select a project, you have a description. Here it happens to show an aerial as well, the project budget, the management team. You'll see exactly what phase it's in. This will be on for each project. Again, the project location, if there's an address, it will drop a pin showing exactly where the address is. Also a project timeline. In addition, you see here we said subscribe to project updates. Any citizen can click on that and then put their email address and they will get updates as we update this, each project. And you can do that for each one of the projects. All right, so again, you see the list of projects for the district. This shows all of the folders. Let's look at this one. So again, you see the picture here. And again, see the same information with the different budgets. It'll show expenditures as you go through the project as well. So again, this is just a demo for now. Again, we hope in a couple of weeks we'll be able to go live. And if any citizen or anyone has a question, they can join the discussion, send an email, and we can respond back. So hopefully that's, any questions?
And then I think the other thing that's most important as well, Commissioners, is we will also be able to attach any resolutions as it pertains to the project. So for example, if you're in a meeting and you want to know the status of a project or who was awarded the contract or when did the board approve it, all of that information will be at your fingertips. One of the things we want to make sure that we do a better job at is telling the story because our SPOSS department is definitely doing a lot of things and there are a lot of projects that are moving. I know in David's budget presentation this evening, he mentioned that the expenditures were very low and that's because we have a lot of projects that are moving that we haven't received invoices for. But we are definitely moving projects and one of the things that we will make sure that we do is every month, update the board on the status of the projects. So at this time, I'll pause for any questions. If there's any additional information you'd like to see, please let us know because we are building it out at this time. But definitely, if you're having meetings regarding the projects, we can add all of that information to this platform.
Okay, well, thank you. I saw Commissioner Wilson and then we'll come to Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Wilson.
So did I hear you say y'all was going to update this every month?
Well, what we want to do and what I've charged staff with is making sure that weekly it is updated. It is a live document. And so it'll do us no good if we don't update it and it's outdated information. So our SPOSS team will be working to update the information. Now, what Tucson has showed you this evening is just SPOSS five, but it will eventually get to be every project that's ongoing at the county level. Capital projects, LMEG projects that may not be SPOSS funded. Any projects that are happening in the county will be included as part of, included within this application.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I definitely like to see the transparency that this brings before us. Some of our constituents want to see how their dollars are used and how they are distributed by project. So thank you so much for bringing this to us. The one thing I would like to see added if that was possible, we don't see the internal flow. That's why I get some questions that a project is staying internally on a desk too long. Now it's in, now it's in one review, this committee, now it's in another review committee. No, I haven't got the business license. Yes, I do have the business license. No, it's back in planning zone. I know they're looking. So we need something to help with that process as well. What is that process that when a developer comes to you or whoever and have a particular project they want to present? I think that process needs to be here as well so they can easily, and I can easily find out where it is in the process. Is it in planning and zone or is it in the final stage of drafting? Are they reviewing such and such and so? That would be helpful as well. I definitely like the fact that you can attach what we do with these projects and with pictures so people can see that. That's a huge improvement. So thank you so much for that and thank you for doing this whole process. And the resolution, Lord have for Jesus, thank you for putting the resolutions on. I have challenged Stephanie to find some software to help her because when I asked her for something, she has to dig for it basically back through a very inadequate software package that does not allow her to immediately have access to some resolution. So if something happened back in nineteen ninety-nine, has never been updated, she's trying to trail it all the way up to twenty-ten or the twenty-eighteen, and that shouldn't be. And I'm hoping that something can be done or be found. I know she's looking for it, that we can have that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a great, 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 great tool. So I'm looking forward to it going live. And again, and hopefully it will help us, you know, to answer some of the questions that we get without having to call as well. So, and I think this is twenty-first century type of technology. So thank you all again for that. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, county manager, any other items?
If not, I just want to remind the board that we are still waiting for some appointments for our Public Safety Committee and for our Transportation Advisory Group. So please, 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 if you can this week, go ahead and get that information to the county clerk. I know our chief is eager to go ahead and have that Public Safety kickoff meeting and he's waiting on some appointments. If you don't remember, if you've made an appointment, just either contact my office or Stephanie in the county clerk's office so that we can go ahead and get that finalized. Other than that, Chair Wood, that's all that I have this evening.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
I have a question for you Chair while you're up there. I need to get the date and the time and the location of the new county COVID testing sites that you guys have funds for. That's part of those CARES Act funds that the county is supposed to be expending, but we haven't heard anything about how the county is spending those funds. So I need the date, time, location of the new county COVID testing site, as well as a list of every expenditure and the balance of funds that the county kept to expend for the county's part of the CARES Act.
Just give it to you. Very good. I will make sure we get that information to you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for the county manager? Okay, seeing none. We'll now go into the Commissioner comments. So let's start with District Four. Any comments?
Well, I would like to make a couple of comments on some of the things that administration really showed up to me and showed out when we had that first day of elections. I want to say thank you to our county manager and her team. Immediately, the needs of the Board of Elections were addressed. They were not put to their side, but immediately, they basically dropped what they were doing. What do we need? We need poles up, we got it. We need people to move machines, she got them. We need telephones and a call center, she got it. She simply jumped into motion at every request that we had and working with Dr. McBride. And a lot of times, that's not noted as to how they so easily work with other departments. So I want to say thank you so much for knowing that there was a need in the county, getting your team together and answering that need in one day and a half. One day and a half, she responded and those other sites were up and operating. So thank you again so much. I wanted to let you know publicly, you made that happen. Thank you again.
Okay, all right. District Five, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, District One?
No comments.
District Two?
No comments.
District Three?
No comment.
Okay, and the only update I have for the board, just wanted to bring you up to speed really quickly. The I seventy-five Quarter Coalition now has a very strategic focus on trying to focus on commuter rail and transit services from Atlanta, at least to Macon for now, and then eventually to Savannah. And right now, there are being legislative small group meetings being held to see if, how can you navigate to get a regional plan for commuter rail and transit services, trying to tie Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson Airport to Warna-Robins. So that focus is going because they felt like we need to at least get some thought into a plan for funding in that aspect. So it's just a question of how do we at least get the feedback to, to the governor to hopefully get some support in the next legislative session. So I just wanted to let you know that that's ongoing right now, at least from that quarter. Yes.
And one other thing, Madam Chair, excuse me. I want to announce that October is not only Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but it's also Domestic Violence Month. And in domestic violence, that's one of my personal passions that I do outside of here. Have a group called Women Igniting Social Change. And as I'm sitting here tonight, they are conducting a forum with one of our own police officers, talking about domestic violence and how it impacts the community and how many people are, found themselves in that situation every year. And during COVID, it has increased about forty percent across the nation because we found that the abusers and the abusee are more together now and some of them are even harsher than it was before. When I had Judge Veal on, I think Monday night, she said her desk is inundated with domestic violence in Henry County. But that's not just here, it's across the nation. It's gone up forty percent. So we're wearing purple and thank you, Madam Chair. We're wearing our purple to talk about pay attention to and check on your friends and neighbors and make sure they are all right. So today, that's called the Purple Check and Reach, where different women across the country are calling one another to make sure they're safe, make sure they're sound, and making sure that we're taking care of each other. And I have to say thank you, Madam Chair, for being a purple champion. Purple champions are things that we build out throughout the year to get transitional grants of money to families who have to run a lot of times out of hostile situations to regain their lives and regain control of who they are and be safe. So this is Domestic Violence Month. We're wearing purple to signify that and I invite you to please check on your friends, check on your family. Let's call this my purple check to make sure you're okay, you're doing okay. Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for that focus. As you know, we've got Haven House as a resource here for women and if there's anyone that's in a domestic violence situation, please do call for help. So thank you again for bringing that awareness. Okay, well, that concludes my comments. So at this time, our upcoming meetings and events, there is a November fourth board meeting at nine o'clock AM. It's a regular Board of Commissioners meeting and please note that this is the Wednesday after Election Day. I didn't know if the board wanted to keep that date or change it back to Tuesday or any thoughts or not, but right now it's planned for November the fourth. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions about, just to leave it there or to change it? Okay, well, we'll leave it November the fourth at nine o'clock AM on that Wednesday after Election Day. And then we'll have our November seventeenth, a regular Board of Commissioners meeting at six-thirty PM. So at this time now, we're open the floor for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other items of discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, thank you everyone for being here, social distancing, and thank you for those of you who are tuned in. Thank you again.